Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Here.
Okay. Any additions, counsel, to this evening's agenda? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from the October 8th council meeting. We have approval of the October 19th payroll of one hun- what is that? It's $117,245.51. We have approval of the September finance report. Acceptance of the library board minutes. We have a resolution of employment in Park and Rec. We have approval of a liquor license for ILS. And we have approval of claims in the amount of $1,348,449.56, of which those claims above $75,000 will be to the Jefferson County Treasurer for $85,308.11. Norris Asphalt of $139,053.88. And PKG Contracting for $922,492.58. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes, but I need to extend from October 8th minutes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And counsel, we'll move to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The first is, this is a reset for a public hearing that we set at our last meeting. It's going to be postponed. So we'll be setting a public hearing for the Water Main Project on East Fillmore and East Madison for our next meeting, which is Tuesday, November 13th at 7:00 p.m. Motion to approve the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you. And next, counsel, we'll move to the second reading of the rezoning of North Campus Village Phases 5 and 6 from R1 Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development. This will be the second reading. We'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any comment on the ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to the second reading for approval.
I would move this from the second to the third reading.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And next, counsel, we have our roll of easements for approval. And we'll ask our city attorney, John Marcy, to lead us through those. Making progress.
I'm assuming everybody did get for their tablets, the easements and the attachments. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
It's all right with his honor, the mayor. We'll just go through a brief description of each easement acquisition. And I'll ask for a motion, and the mayor can go through the rest of the parliamentary with you. If someone will start the motions. The first one we're going to deal with is the Bernard's 508 Royal Oaks. We are acquiring for $1,500, 500ths of an acre of permanent easement and 500ths of an acre of temporary easement for $1,500.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the easement acquisition at $1,500?
So moved.
By Hamilton, second by Flornoy.
I'm here.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
All right. Our second acquisition is Fairfield Evergreen Cemetery Association. We are receiving from them a permanent easement of .09 hundredths of an acre. It's a nominal sum that we're dealing with on that, but it's a little different because we're doing it with them as a corporation. It's going to be $780 or 680 plus $100 for their title work.
Okay.
Have a motion.
So we've motioned then to approve the easement acquisition for Evergreen Cemetery, $780.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton and second by Anderson. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
We have two acquisitions from Greg and Lori Frye. The first is project parcel number 24. And it is a $3,050 purchase of 59 hundredths of an acre of permanent and 63 hundredths of an acre of temporary easement. Have a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve the Frye acquisition.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
Second Frye parcel is labeled project parcel number 27. Again, it's for a permanent and a temporary easement along Glasgow Road. There is a $3,890 payment for 7,800 of an acre of permanent easement and 67 hundredths of an acre temporary easement.
Okay. Thank you, John. So entertain a motion to approve parcel 27 to Greg and Lori Frye, $3,890.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
Next acquisition is part of Lot 19 in Indian Creek subdivision. It's Chris and Carol Johnson. There is a $3,000 monetary payment being made for 51 hundredths of an acre of permanent easement and 14 hundredths of an acre temporary easement.
Okay. I'm sorry, John, total on that?
Say again, your honor.
The total on that, please?
Excuse me, $3,100.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve for the Johnsons' easement, Lot 19, or $3,100.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
Our next acquisition is part of Track D of Kingswood subdivision as revised. It's Brian and Jewel McDonald. We're paying $1,750 for 17 hundredths of an acre of permanent and 12 hundredths of an acre of temporary easement.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the land acquisition at 609 Pleasant Plain for McDonald's, $1,750.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
We have an acquisition, project parcel number 26, which is also a part of Indian Creek subdivision, Lot 17. It is Ted Goldstein and Daniella Goldstein, but they are doing it through Sidhe LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company. Your resolution is worded a little bit differently on the second and third page as far as what we need to be sure about, as far as their limited liability company and the authority they have. So it reads a little differently, but we're buying essentially a permanent easement for 1 one hundredths of an acre. And the price on this... I suppose it is $100.
$100, okay.
That $100 is... I guess it's about the minimum of any of these I've seen unless it's a donation, but it's $100.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the easement acquisition for Lot 17, Sidhe LLC, $100.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
We have an acquisition at 501 Royal Oaks Fairfield, a part of Lot 11 of Royal Oaks subdivision from Devani Wagner for $8,220, which is for 19 hundredths of an acre of permanent easement and 17 hundredths of an acre temporary easement.
Thank you. Entertain a motion then to approve the easement land acquisition of 501 Royal Oaks for Devani Wagner, $8,220.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
We have a couple of acquisitions in Deerview Estate. One of the acquisitions is for project parcels 19 and 20. It's a small place, $140. And it's for 2 one hundredths of an acre of permanent easement and 4 one hundredths of an acre of temporary easement.
Does it fit through something like that, Melanie? Is there enough room there? Okay, entertain a motion then to approve the easement and land acquisition at 1107 Cody Circle, Deerview Estates Limited, $140.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you.
We have project parcel 15, which is Lot 1 of Deerview Estates. It's an acquisition of 17 hundredths of an acre more or less for a temporary easement only, and it's a $170 payment.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion to consider the second easement land acquisition at 1107 Cody Circle.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. We're down to our last one.
We have an acquisition from Parkview Care Center. It is for 71 hundredths of an acre of permanent easement and 3.78 acres of temporary easements. It's a payment of $6,990 to Parkview.
Okay. Counsel, our final easement resolution for parcels 28, 29, and 30, Parkview Care Center, the amount of $6,990. Entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Thompson, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay.
As of today, I have in my possession probably another 10 easements for your 13th of November meeting. Melanie informs me that she received something from Eco Village. I expect we'll probably present maybe 15 or 16 easements then. And then we've got some that there's still some negotiation going on with. But we're getting past the point where I think by November, we'll have more than 2/3 of these approved, and we'll just wait and do some finish work on the other negotiations.
Great. Okay, thank you, John. Appreciate that. Next, counsel, in my report, I just wanted to mention that November 5th, 4:30, we'll have our work session with Confluence, the group that is doing our comprehensive plan. They will be in town tomorrow all day. They're meeting with stakeholders. So the process, I think, is really going to start to move more substantially as we get into our council work session. And then also that evening, they will have a public hearing. Now, Aaron, have you had any conversations with them about publicizing the public hearing or the public forum?
Yes, I have a press release from them that will put on the Facebook page, website, get it out to the paper and to the radio station and stuff here probably tomorrow.
Okay, that's great. So we're two weeks out, and I think any of you who have any ways that you're publicizing to the community or constituents, just encourage you to... We can get as many people as we can out to the public hearing. I think that would be beneficial to the plan overall.
You're at the Arts Convention Center.
It is at the Arts Convention Center, correct.
I think the work session will be here.
Yes.
And then we'll have some... Since it's... That's from 4:30 to 6:00, and then the public session is supposed to start at 6:30. We'll have something for you all to eat and then go there since it's a work session.
Okay.
You can do that.
We'll move to our administrator department reports. Melanie, have a project update for us and also the EPA report.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're getting towards the end of construction season. Things are looking good. We've talked plenty about step 1 and step 2 in the wastewater treatment plant. But Adams Avenue, they've moved on to the second portion. You'll see on Adams Court and 227th, all have October 31st completion dates. They won't quite meet within those, but I'm not expecting anything to drag on for a long period of time. The foot of rain that we got in September didn't allow much fall progress, but now, especially with the winds over the weekend, there was a lot of progress made even today on the paving projects. And so if you move down to Court Street, they plan to pave that on Wednesday and Thursday. This particular contractor is going to be paving a curb and gutter unit first, and they'll do that Wednesday, Thursday, and then they'll pave the center part the following week. They'll have the rock down. They may even have the rock down yet today. So if we would get some more rain, we won't be... It won't be holding up the project even by pouring it in these separate pieces that this contractor is doing. French Reniker, the engineer overseeing the project, wanted me to point out that we are well over our estimate on rock for this project. There was a lot of unknown conditions found. Plus, then, all the rain we got in September did not help. However, because the bids were under the engineer's estimate, we're still within the development agreement budget. So we've been watching both those budgets as we approve the change orders for additional rock. 227th, again, they're just finishing up, may not meet the October 31st, but very close. And then lastly, point out the public hearing for the Fillmore and Madison Avenue Water Main Project that you set tonight. Normally, the city does the public hearing at one council meeting and then awards the contract the next council meeting. Due to the publication or lack of publication of the notice, we're going to be doing those on the same night. So if the public has... If any of the public wants to see the plans, they can call me. But any of the staff here knows where the plans are that if the public just wants to view them. So since this is... We're doing a little different than normal, I want to make sure to get it out there that the plans are available to the public and they can come to City Hall to review those. Any questions on the project update? Okay. On the EPA report, I won't go into all of the details. This is just to let you know that we are doing our six-month report back to them. This is part of our compliance schedule is to report to them every six months and include the SSO summaries. If you remember from the April report, we had very little SSOs the last half, but a few more this year. If you go to page 5 on your... Of that report, it's the summary of the SSOs, and it lists the total rainfall and the manholes. And the thing I wanted to point out is that of all of those SSOs, only Manhole 9-1A and the Stone Street Lift Station are not part of step 1 or step 2. So we do look to get step 1 and step 1 and 1/2 online here yet this year. Right towards the end of the year is the goal that the wastewater plant has set. So we hope to see those SSO reductions as early as next springs rains.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
Yep.
Any questions regarding the EPA report?
When you say reductions, you mean elimination?
The requirement is that it's for... I believe it's a rain of 4 inches in 24 hours. Anything above that, we are allowed to have an SSO. That is what the design of the pipe sizes were meant to handle. So there's still maybe, you know, if we get 6 inches of rain and Jefferson Avenue's standing full of water, an SSO would be allowed on something like that.
Okay, thank you. Well, we do look forward to the system being connected and taking a lot of those cares off of our shoulders because it is still a little disheartening to read about them when we do have them, but we are reporting them. And I think I'd entertain a motion to accept the report, the EPA report.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Aaron, you're next.
The first thing on the list here is the... For my report is the access system IT proposal. What this proposal is, is a total quality care... Being provided to us is... This is going to be a service that's probably better than what we have right now from what I understand. The... They came... They were actually in communication with the mayor about his service, and we had just started having issues, and we've had some customer service issues with our current provider for a while. And so we had them come and do an evaluation of our system. And of course, then, we had our... Had our...
Intrusion.
Virus. And became blatantly... And when they came back and showed me the issues that we have, our service is not being done very well through KCT... Or, excuse me, our current provider. So since we've already had a number of different providers for our IT service, I felt that having this one bid is actually acceptable at this point. But we really need something, and we need... Kind of need to do it yesterday. And so that's why I'm presenting it to you as one bid. But I think this is something that we really need to move forward on to have some protection and safety for our... Not only just our security here, but from the library and for Parks and Rec, who also has servers. And this would provide service for our entire city system.
It coordinates all of the different access points that we have within the city. They have a very good customer service response mechanism, a lot of it being done virtually so that if there is anything, they have access to our computers and they can go in and, you know, remedy things from where they are. If there is any kind of equipment failure or any sort of real emergency, they would be here within a four-hour period. They're a large and growing company in Iowa. They have, you know, just a very professional team of folks. We've been very happy with the interaction that we've had. And then my question about the library, Aaron, because I'm not sure if it's final app, but I know we've had issues during budgeting where they've wanted to have their own IT services. This going to be able to meet the needs that they have over there?
I did go present to their library board a couple of weeks ago.
Somebody was there, okay.
I did ask, and then I talked to the sales rep about what they would be providing, what there are... The majority of the services that they need would be provided for. There would be some other issues that they would probably have to continue to work with their contact.
Maintenance issues and things like that, but yeah.
But yeah, the majority of them, it would be covered through this contract.
Okay. I think that alone would really help. So are you asking for the council's approval then for...
Yeah, because of our purchasing policy and our financial policy, I need the approval from the council.
And what you have in here is not... Is it the full proposal?
This is the proposal for the monthly service. It doesn't include the security fixes that you need, that we need right away. There's another proposal that they had that was a $40,000 proposal to fix a bunch of stuff right away.
Right.
And that...
But again, that kind of protection that we need, and it is more and more frequent where, you know, large entities are being essentially shut down or taken over with ransomwares and malicious software. So I think it's wise that we protect everything that we have to the highest degree.
Aaron, what's... How does this price compare to what we're currently paying?
It's probably going to be... I would say it's probably a little bit more than double. I don't remember exactly what we're spending, but this also includes what the library's going to be spending, what Park and Rec spends. So we probably spend somewhere around $1,000 a month or ish, whereas the Park and Rec puts in a couple hundred bucks a month. The library probably has quite a bit a month. I don't know what they have, but they spend money. So this is going to be a system that it... I mean, it's going to bring everything in to one system or one solution, per se, and give us... I think it's going to give us a better opportunity to keep problems out.
So is this a contract or just this is a month-to-month thing?
This will be a... I think the proposal is going to end up being a year contract, but it's going to be paid monthly on a monthly basis.
I understand that, I just wanted to know what our...
It's a contract. It's a one-year contract.
Yeah. It's about $48,000, $49,000.
And 44 cents.
Yes, and 44 cents.
And 44 cents.
44 cents. That's pretty good.
I would move approval.
Okay, moved by Thompson to approve the contract with access systems.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
And Hallie.
And yes.
Thank you. This passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Okay, also with our... If you've noticed in our financial report, our unobligated reserve funds are building, along with our cash in our general fund is building. We also have funds in our water and sewer that we're obligated to have that sit in the basically a checking account and don't create very much interest. So what I did is I sent out letters of proposals to all the banks, local banks here in town to ask for what their CD rate would be for an annual CD, also comparing it with I paid also. So the grand prize winner for this year's CDs, as we move forward, is actually Pilot Grove Savings. They are willing to give us a 2.75% CD for an annual CD. So I will start doing some CDs purchases here in the near future. I won't do all of the finances so that we have liquidity throughout the year, but I'll start doing that so that we can...
They know those are restricted funds, right?
Who, the bank?
The bank, because that... Some banks can't take restricted government funds.
I didn't...
Might want to double check.
I'll have to check with them for that. But that's something I've been working on. Also, we met with the sheriff and the county attorney regarding the 28E agreement with the dispatch center. We would like to look at funding the dispatch center in a different way. The sheriff saw... Or I should say, Dave has looked into some funding changes that Burlington PD and...
What county? Des Moines County, sir.
Des Moines County have changed their dispatch center to basically a regional center, so it'll be kind of similar to what we're looking at with our ambulance system. So it would become a little bit different entity to where we can look at possibly billing or charging for dispatch. for dispatch by population rather than the two biggest entities paying the whole bill. So it becomes more of an equitably, I hate the word fair, but a fair system rather than us funding this whole system. Then the last thing, I've been in contact with McClure Engineering regarding our sludge removal contract. We have an agreement. It's under what you approved me to spend. And McClure is offering to put a few dollars in, along with PKG offering to do some things. Actually, it's going to be more of a work in kind or trade, adding some work out there for us rather than spending more dollars and stuff like that. So we're going to make, it's going to get worked out and we're going to avoid going to litigation for it. And that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Aaron, I appreciate that. I appreciate your work on the CD research and getting some of those funds working for us a little bit better. Is there any other business for the council? Entertain a motion to approve?
Moved to adjourn.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Meeting adjourned.